No telling what the answer might be. You're embarrassed.
I'm just telling you. Hold on his forearm. She's really brave to say that.
That's right, I can do a good job of that. I'm heading to the court for this first thing. So if y'all think they're not there, you know my.
Well, in case they don't go with it.
I can tell you what's going to steal them from me.
I've been invited.
Is that a?
I've been invited.
The good one.
I'll tell you what I don't see on it. About all happy. I'll prove that's really good.
It is.
Right.
Kate's got a great point. If you go back, we started with this. Then, I'm not looking. I'm not looking.
Now, what's that?
Twenty.
That's a hundred percent. Twenty percent.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's time to get our meeting.
For the what report?
I'll go ahead and, well, we're doing this, we would, and, uh, have the invocation, Brother
Jack, only said the cross, please.
Power is, as we all pray together, our heavenly Father, as we come with this act known of grace, this evening, Father, know that you are the supreme ruler of heaven and earth. We pray that we might set our sights upon you instead of the things around us in the world. We pray to you, ladies and gentlemen, in this meeting tonight, we pray, Father, that there be unity in one accord and agreement with each other. We just pray for this little city of Mount Pleasant. We pray for our commissioners and our city manager, Father, as we come together, we pray that you might see this, this neighbors and community meet together time to time in harmony and one another. We pray now that you bless us as we go through them. May you part this meeting in Jesus' precious name, we pray this prayer. Amen.
Would remain standing, please, in private class allegiance. Please say with me.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, in the best law, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would call the roll for.
Mr. Van Marys here. Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, here.
Mr. White?
Here. We do have a, you know, all present, so we have the call, we need to care on business. We start with item four, approval, correction of minutes from prior meeting. Two items on that. Uh, first, the amended minutes.
I'm sorry, may I interrupt you? The reason that we're asking you to amend the minutes for the March 21st meeting is that we left out language that the bank will require on the new account that we've opened. And if you look at the, um, in your packet, it's the paragraph after the section of approval, corrections of minutes. And, um, you'll then basically vote to approve the amended minutes for March, and then we'll move on to April.
As everyone understand what City Manager explained to us, that we had a question there. Any questions on that? Chairman, entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to amend the minutes for the morning.
Correct the minutes.
All right, the motion has been amended, approved to amend them, and duly seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, signal five, a saying aye. Aye. All in favor. The amended minutes have passed. Item B, regular meeting, April 18th, 2017. Any questions on that? Comments? Chairman, entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
So moved. Which is White, second.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and duly seconded. All in favor, signal five, saying aye. Aye. The amendments have been approved. Item five, warrants presentation, appointments, uh, the appointments.
Just one on the industrial development board, it's Doug with Tom.
Just term now, did we determine what terms are, three years or five years, or six years?
Five.
Five years. We are absolutely correct.
Part of the problem was that, that Tom Harden kept up with all of that. That's one of the boards we're having trouble with, because he did all of that.
Well, for the benefit of, of the board and, and the audience, so forth, we're gonna try to do a lot better job of keeping up these points, and it is a headache, I can tell you. It, um, we used to do it at the county out of my office, and I've had many bad moments with my ladies fussing at me and my sisters fussing at me. They couldn't keep. What happens is people resign, die, and so forth, and they have part of a term left. It's very, very hard if you don't do it at that particular time. So I ask that one person be assigned to do this duty, to keep up this, because it's very important, sometimes very embarrassing. It could go someone, and then their time is up, and so on and so forth. So we'll, we, I know you're gonna take care of that.
Yes.
All right, so aye, this time then, I have no problem with Mr. Marshall, who served very well, he's a good citizen of Murray County, and I would put him forth as my nomination for reappointment to the, um, industrial development board.
Not second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, signal five, saying aye. Aye. Mr. Marshall's calling for full term back on the development board. Item six, completion review of any unfinished business from prior meeting. We have ordinance 2017-1003, public hearing final reading, and ordinance rezoning of parcel located at tax map 1330, parcel 10, South Port Road, RG1 to RG3. It may refresh our mind on that.
Yes, this is Bradley McNeese's property, the old Park School building, and he asked for it to go to RG3, because he's planning on putting in, um, three duplexes at this time. And it was approved on first reading in this meeting, it's considered a public hearing. If there's anybody in the audience that wants to say anything about it.
I'm going to ask that time, is anyone here who wants to make a statement about this particular rezoning of? And if you would let the record show, no one, uh, was here to oppose or to, uh, support. Do the commissioners have any comments or questions about this, or a call for a motion?
And they say have approved this to be added to the sewer.
All right, chairman, entertain a motion for, uh, approve this motion, please, as presented.
So moved.
So moved, second.
Second.
Duly seconded. All in favor, signal five, a saying aye. Aye. Ordinance 2017-1003 has passed.
This is the first reading of this.
Second.
Second reading.
Uh, item seven, monthly financial slash budget report. Madam Court.
I think we have, uh, we've been working very hard, and we have in front of you your, uh, your budgets, and, uh, we are, uh, replacing a few of the pages, um, from the, uh, feedback we received at our work session, um, last Saturday. Uh, we have, uh, most of them are minor changes. There was one that, uh, Murielite was, uh, five thousand, and the, uh, wishes of the board seemed to be that they wanted to do 2,500 on that. Also included, and for some of them, I think, uh, Sonya's still, uh, replacing some of your pages, you'll also have additional pages that will have the actual nonprofit, uh, request and statement, um, in, in with those. And, um, this will be the first reading tonight, so we'll, uh, we'll again address it at the, uh, work session next month before the final reading in June. We'll also be asking you tonight to approve on first reading, the budget amendment, uh, that is primarily just, uh, cleanup amendment, end of the year cleanup amendment, which is, uh, normal at the end of the year, to make sure that we're not over in any items. And mostly that is just moving, if you'll have to excuse me, I've got a cold this evening. Mostly that is just moving, uh, money usually from one line item to the other within the, uh, with the, within the, uh, function. And, uh, as far as April, uh, financials go, we pretty much ended about where we should be, right about eighty-five percent. Uh, we have put a, uh, deadline of last Friday, uh, to get purchase orders in. I will say that I have had wonderful, um, cooperation with the other departments in getting their, um, final purchases made for the year, so that we can have, uh, have time, sufficient time to get invoices in and get them paid before June 30th, and not have so many carryover. We're gonna have some, there's no way around that, but, but, uh, that way we don't have that last onslaught of, of purchases. We're trying to get all that already in place, and so we have done that. We are also continuing our, uh, project on, uh, updating our gas taxes and auditing to an internal audit of those taxes. Uh, we have received a pretty good number of, uh, exemption certificates, and we will be comparing those to, on file, and anybody that, if they do not have exemption certificate on file, uh, they will be, uh, charged sales tax on that. Again, that is a tax that goes straight to the state, and, uh, we are legally obligated to collect those taxes. Uh, does anybody have any questions about it? I think I had your, I emailed you your, your reports to you.
This is one addition that, that we've added, because in last year's budget process, we told you we were, we were gonna try and start a capital equipment replacement program. That's been added to your, it's very basic right now. It's basically each department listing every vehicle they have, uh, when it was purchased, what its current value is, the miles or hours it has on it, and when we anticipate replacing it. So we're looking into the future of replacing these things and not waiting until they fall apart and have to do an emergency purchase. So we still need some work on it, but it is in your, in your finders.
Questions? Um, Ms. Director?
Uh, please, if you don't mind. Well, Reddick, we received our audit back a couple of months ago.
Yes.
Have we addressed all those findings?
We are addressing those findings. Um, have we got them all cleared up? No, but we're working on them, we're working on that. So you may, you know, when they do the audit, because we didn't get, get them done first of the year, we may still see that finding, but it should also be noted in there that we cleared it up by the end of the year. So that's our, our goal, was to get all of those audit findings addressed and cleared up, uh, by year end. Of course, we did also have the additional, uh, internal controls that we updated, uh, and I, I think that will help also in some of those findings.
The problem that followed, please.
Yes, sir. As we, I personally take the audit findings very personal, because that's, uh, my responsibility, and we want to make sure that we're, we know we're always gonna have findings. If we didn't have findings, then either A, we're not doing our job, because we're not doing anything, or B, our auditors are not doing the job. So that's, I, I just feel like we'll always have them, and I welcome them, but it's our opportunity to make everything function more efficiently.
They're not earning their keep.
I'm sorry?
They're not earning you if they don't plan something.
Any other questions?
Questions? Chairman, entertain a motion to accept the financial report.
My question.
Motion has been made, and you're second.
Second.
Duly seconded. All in favor, signal five, a saying aye. Aye. Those like sign, that the report has accepted. Item eight, monthly report from City Manager.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, the monthly report is put together from the department, departmental reports that you have in your packet, and then I put them together to create the same to city that's available the first of the month, it'll be the first of June, available online, and hard copy from the city hall.
Any questions on any of these reports?
I'd just like to thank Chief Hay for getting that information together for us on the qualifications required.
Certification.
And it appears that everybody's in good order and managed very well. Donnie, I noticed we're getting a little better on the water.
A little bit, yes, sir.
Baby steps.
Very slowly.
Baby steps. If you look year over year, I mean, it's, it's getting better.
It, it's slowly, but we're, we're still finding, we got a long ways to go.
Oh, yeah, but we'll get there.
I was trying to sound him, but you probably know, how many openings do, or advertised positions do you have?
We have a police officer position that's open, and, um, one in these areas, is that right? Are you full? Do you have an opening seat?
No.
Open position?
No.
Do you, Donnie?
Not as of right now.
But right now, just one.
Okay. Item nine, special report from other city departments or committees if applicable.
I thought this might be a good opportunity, uh, for way far to liaise on reports. There's no official report, but you all did. We did sit down and discuss with the engineers of the study session, uh, next steps. Most of the conversation was involving funding sources, but if anybody has any questions about the biomag system, any concerns on the biomag system, the trunk line, the, the rain street, if you wanna bring those forward at this time, but basically the resolution is strictly about applying for the funding. I didn't know if there were any questions on that. Been glad to try and address them.
Anybody have any questions on that? It was a rather good report, something answered most all of our questions.
And, and a biomag has answered staff's questions, which puts me at a comfort level. Okay.
What about the, uh?
There's no reports of the gathering.
Yeah, okay, that's a good idea, but not, yeah. Item ten, new business, comments from citizens lately, not be included. Item eight, ordinance 2017-1004, first reading, ordinance to amend ordinance 2016-985, set ordinance cooperating the revenues, expenses of operating and maintaining the department of functions of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2016, ending June 30th, 2017, providing effective date.
And, uh, Mayor, this, uh, will be the last budget amendment for this fiscal year, so first reading in May, uh, and last reading in, in June. And you can see, um, in your packet, and we have everything that has been amended outlined. And I wanna point out to you that a lot of these amendments that are in here don't even need to get permission from commission, because they're within a fund. We only need the commissions of, of permission when we, uh, move things out of a fund and back into a different fund, but we want you to see it all. So if you just follow along the, the third column where it says the amendment, you're gonna see every change we're making to the budget. And it might be tweaked a little bit between now and second reading, but if you have any questions, we'd be glad to address them for you. This is when we get grants that we didn't have in the budget, because we don't budget it until the grant comes in, so now we have to add the grant, and then the expenditure of the grant, so typically those are the types of changes that are made.
Historically, has there been a lot of cleanup in, in the, uh, June reading? Is it, you remember, uh, we get most of it done with this?
Yes, you won't see many changes. I, and you may not see any, but I'm just saying, usually we, we, between the first and second, make sure we've got it down, because that is the final.
Yeah, which is also, uh, the purpose of trying to cut off the purchase orders and get all the purchasing done now, so that we can give them time to get those done, if, should they be necessary. Although I do, we just filed out today that there will be one between now and the next reading, and that, uh, we had to spend some money on that, um, SED, the steps, and so that will be.
Spend some money from the state, that instead of getting fined, we, we go out and repair sewers, and that's about money that, that they're talking about. We have a few projects that we're using that money for.
So that'll, still a little bit, might be a little bit of change there, between the end of balance and beginning on the next budget.
Any further questions about this ordinance? Chairman, entertain a motion, please.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept. You're like Chip, you're second.
Second.
Second, like Commissioner Davis, all in favor, signal five, saying aye. Aye. Those like sign, that ordinance has passed on first reading. Ordinance 2017-1005, first reading, and ordinance of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018.
It's obviously the ordinance to adopt the budget for the next fiscal year. Um, any discussions we have or changes we wanna make, we can make between first and second reading, this is first read.
So this traditionally then has not been where things got changed, except in the second reading.
The final changes are.
Well, I mean, did, did.
Well, anything, anything that you, that we've discussed and agreed upon, we, we have made adjustments already in here for the first.
Where do we get the five percent I asked for, for the capital outlay?
The money you're able to set aside for the capital outlay, if, can you earmark where you, where that came from?
They, uh, um, and they, what we, the cuts were made in 2,500, and it was just, that was.
So that.
We went through a few areas where, uh, uh, we didn't think the money was necessary, and we ended up with a little bit of money, and we decided to just take that little bit of money and start the little capital out.
It pretty much come across the board, I guess.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's not, no, it's not.
No one department.
No, no, no. No, little here, a little bit here, a little bit here. And that's how we created that. And we still don't have our revenue numbers.
No, I emailed him, or I actually talked to him yesterday, and he said he would be sending me the, the preliminary figures, um, and then I would get my final figures at the end of May.
Who, who is he?
Bobby Daniels.
That's what Bobby.
So, um, the county's telling me their, their, uh, property tax is up three percent. Ours should be two if theirs is, so, uh, every little bit counts. We just haven't had those numbers yet, so Chief created the budget based on last year's elections.
So we, if, if there is, except that unusual, we're still maintaining the same tax rate that we're running.
Yes. Unless you, you recommend changing it. Right now, it's set on our current tax rate.
I just don't see it replaced. Now, you can't depend on this thing, if you look at the paper that you, it's already handoffed, and it's getting to almost six weeks ago, so.
Mm-hmm.
We gotta keep reserve, and we need to continue to build toward at least, in my opinion, a six-month reserve to operate the city.
Do you?
We gotta get, we gotta start somewhere.
I don't remember what we did. We asked for two different things, did we put any?
Yes, you, we initially put in three. Uh, you asked what a two and a half would cost, and it was about nine thou, is that right? Nine thousand dollars?
A little over nine thousand.
But I got the impression, and if I'm wrong, just tell me, at the study session, we leave it at three. That's what, that's what we, that's what's in there right now.
That's, okay, that's what I thought.
And it has that.
That's what we say.
And I'm gonna, um, in the June meeting, have just a very rudimentary pay plan, uh, top, bottom, for positions we had, and I have to stay within those ranges.
I know we had asked, and that's what you said Thursday, not that I wasn't clear on where we left it, but I thought it was three percent. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mayor, I, I had a question, and I've already posed this decay in there, and look at it, but the delinquent property taxes on the revenue side, I think we need to be a bit more conservative. I mean, we're, and when it was going through this budget.
Mayor, what page do you want?
Uh, I want, uh, I didn't look at anything in big swings, I mean, ten thousand dollars or so. This one item, I mean, we're, we're budgeting to have revenue in excess of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars over what we're currently running for this year.
Because at the point that, when you have, when you're looking at delinquents, they don't become delinquent till March the first.
Well, I understand, but I'm looking at previous years that were at forty-eight thousand dollars, and that was delinquent from three, one of sixteen. Correct?
It, so it goes from July 1st, it's the collections from July 1st.
Well, I understand, but they become delinquent March 1st.
Right, yes, they do.
Okay. So in looking at this in nine months period of time, we collected forty-eight thousand dollars. And we're saying that next year, we're gonna collect a hundred and seventy thousand.
Okay. As compared to, um, the whole year, one whole year, and because the, the big thing was, and what made this one so hard to calculate, was that you had that huge number back in fifteen, sixteen.
Right, and that's as I understood when we began to collect.
Yeah, and that's when you began to collect, yeah, so.
So my concern is, again, I, I just wanna make sure, because, and what the mayor's trying to do is build us a reserve, and we absolutely have to do that. I, I just don't want us to be expecting a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of revenue that's not going to be coming in.
Okay, well, what I can do is, uh, is to get with, uh, Latoya tomorrow, about, and see exactly how many.
Kind of where it is.
Where it is right now, uh, on, based on current, you know, what's, what is outstanding from that we're yet to collect from, uh, after March the, or March the first.
Beginning as of March 1st in seventeen.
Right. And then see where those balance of those that had not paid at that point in time, and then maybe take, what, a ninety-five percent collection rate of that.
And we'll, we'll give you a written response to that question before the second reading.
I just think that we're, from appearance, you know, we're being.
Overly optimistic.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it.
And that's, that's good feedback, if anybody found anything like that anywhere else in the bunch, just please.
Well, there's one other line item I found, and I may not be able to find it, fit in. One other thing I wanted to add to is that I hope over the next year, that maybe we can find some way to make Chief Hayes' request for at least maybe additional officer or officers as we move forward, because, I mean, it's, uh, I'm sorry I was not able to attend the budget meeting, but I, I just think that that's critical.
And I, uh, I, the chief, that, uh, you know, like I said, we don't even have our revenue figures yet, that's up, that's some money there, um, and that we'll kind of regroup, um, in the next ninety days and see where we are, and keep watching that. And there's, been some staffing pattern changes in the police department to make sure we have supervision at night, and, uh, doing things a little bit differently, so, uh, we're gonna stay on that, and we'll give you an update in the next ninety days on that.
I don't see holding up a budget over it, but I just, I just see that as being.
And then, that's what I said, if you had, when we replaced some of these, if you had, if you had notes on there, I just threw a big X across it.
Right, yes, and thank you.
So that you know that that one had been replaced, but I didn't, but I need to have your notes, and then we'll lose it up.
Thank you. And the last thing I want to say is I want to thank Kate and all the department heads. From what I understand, this is probably the first year that the department heads and city managers sat down and worked on the budget together.
That, that disturbed me, yes.
Did it just now happen?
We did it last year.
Okay.
Well, we're better at it this year.
But thank y'all, I, I really appreciate them working together on that instead of being thrown and over and going.
No, yeah, I, I can't tell the department what they need to budget, they need to help me, tell me.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, one was very different, too, that it was the Saturday we worked, they were worked very diligently with us, and it was very congenial, and giving us feedback and allowing us to answer past questions, very many.
Saturday meeting was much better.
Yeah, no, I don't say it was pleasant, because we were dealing with, working on the Saturday, but they all very willingly stayed and answered every question we had asked, and, uh, did it very pleasantly. That was, that was a, a big help to understanding of the.
I, I just think it's great what you all've done, and thank you for that.
We're gonna need a motion on this.
You want to accept first reading?
I'll second that. All right, motion been made and duly seconded at this ordinance on first reading, 2017-1005, it will be passed, all in favor, signal five, aye. Aye. Those like sign. Item C, ordinance 2017-13, resolution by the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, declaring certain Mount Pleasant Police Department inventory as surplus property, authorizing the sale of this surplus property.
Mayor and Commissioner, uh, in that resolution, it lists all the.
I really appreciate them working together on that instead of being thrown a number and going.
No, yeah, I can't tell the department what they need to budget. They need to help me, tell me.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, what was very different, too, that it was the Saturday we worked, they were worked very diligently with us, which was very congenial, and giving us feedback and allowing us to answer, ask questions, very many.
Questions for the Saturday meeting was much better.
Yeah, no, I don't say it was pleasant, because we were dealing with, working on the Saturday, but they all very willingly stayed and answered any questions we had asked, and did it very pleasantly. That was, that was a big help to understanding what we were doing.
I just think it's great what you all have done, and thank you for that.
We don't need a motion on that.
Is that first read?
I'll second that. All right, motion been made and duly seconded, that this ordinance on first reading, 2017 one zero zero five, will be passed, all in favor, signify the same eye. Those like sign. Item C, ordinance two oh one seven dash one three, resolution by the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, declaring certain Mount Pleasant Police Department inventory as surplus property and authorizing the sale of this surplus property.
Mayor and Commissioner, in that resolution, it lists all the equipments that were asked for the surplus. We're, we have one, the resolution's almost every month, and we're buying equipment that we're not using, or it's obsolete. It does sell on dump deals, and we get money back for it rather than it just sitting around. So, this is, everything on here is out of the police department.
Any questions, further discussion? Chair, I'm taking a motion, please.
I'm taking a motion, in place of resolution twenty seven dash thirteen.
Okay, is it second to that?
Second.
Okay, that's been made and seconded, all in favor, signify the same eye. All opposed. Resolution 2017 dash thirteen is passed. Item D, resolution 2017 dash fourteen, a resolution authorizing the appropriation of municipal funds for nonprofit organizations just being for the airport.
Yes, and Mayor and Commissioners, it requires by law to have a separate resolution, even if you approve the budget with this money in here, we have to have a separate resolution for each nonprofit. That's why you have a region in front of you. First one is $5,000 for the Murray County Airport.
And their, their letters, their request letters are included in your book list?
In the finders?
In the finders, yeah.
Any questions? Chair, I'm taking a motion, please.
Motion.
Motion to accept. Second, second. Davis, further discussion? All in favor, signify the same eye. All opposed, like time, resolution 2017 dash fourteen is passed. Item E, resolution 2017 dash fifteen, a resolution authorizing the appropriation of municipal funds for nonprofit organizations, the CDC.
The Community Development Corporation, and the resolution outlines $25,000.
Okay, discussions?
Mayor, you know, I guess, you know, I didn't think it needed to be that much or whatever. I guess, I thought this week, I know we do have $350,000 coming in off of our medical, and we got, what, $60,000 off of gas, and that can be used for this, is that correct?
Yes, you can go into the general fund, and we're hoping to go back two years and get the other gas and little tax money. We haven't gotten an answer on that yet.
Because I don't want to get nothing, I guess, to go against, you know, what's happened and been done with that now, so that's what I was.
We get a tremendous surplus for that $25,000.
And also, just to add, it doesn't just go just to the downtown. It goes to everything that goes on here in Mount Pleasant, to the Parks and Rec, to the community, to almost everything that it touches, the Chamber of.
Schools.
Schools.
The event, yeah.
Just so you know, it goes to everything that is here, that we're, anyway, that's what we have.
Chair, I'm taking a motion, please.
Same move.
The movement's quiet, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify the same eye. All opposed, like time, resolution 2017 dash fifteen has been approved. Item F, resolution twenty dash, uh, 2017 dash sixteen, a resolution authorizing the appropriation of municipal funds for nonprofit organizations, the museum.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is for the museum, the same as last year, $1,000. I do want to point out that historically, the city has always paid their gas bill. I don't know if there's anything in writing about that, but I think from what they told me, they want us to keep paying the gas bill, so they're not asking for any more money.
How about their gas bill?
It's not outrageous, but no, this, it's.
I can't see that covered.
It's a thousand plus the gas bill. I just want you to be aware of that. There's no document.
Somewhere.
And you did tell us that all three of these nonprofits have turned in their.
Yes, sir.
To that.
Do we need to add that to the resolution, that the city is thankful of the gas?
Uh, this resolution is simply a donation, yeah. I asked, I think I scared them because I asked if there was something in writing that, that, that is the reason that we pay the gas bill, and I think historically, there's nothing in writing that we've been paying it ever since we've been over there.
But that's still not a donation. What's that?
No, she's asking if it was paying for the gas bill, is that considered a donation? I think you probably need a resolution on it.
Yeah, because I mean, we're doing it, so it's still part of a donation.
Well, yeah, why don't we go ahead and approve this $1,000, and we'll come back with a resolution saying the city agrees to pay the gas bill.
Sure, they didn't do that without some kind of resolution.
There's, that happens a lot. Oh, that happens a lot more than you think it does. Not, not now, I'm talking about historically.
Yeah, it's one of those, we all, you did it.
Yeah.
All right, there's further discussion on this resolution for the museum. Not, Chair, I'm taking a motion, please. Motion to approve, second. Davis, further discussion? All in favor, signify the same eye. All like time, resolution 2017 dash sixteen is approved.
Before we, do we have to do, do we need to do one for, you know, I think we said we did for Murray Island, we have to do one.
Remember, we called that quasi-governmental, and it's in the budget at 2,500.
Okay, and I'm, I'm not too sure the airport, it's kind of.
Quasi-governmental.
Yeah, it's all those, but we decided go ahead and continue it.
Yeah, let's say charter or glass your pocket, please. I love to do something or nothing. Item G, resolution 2017 dash seventeen, a resolution by the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager to complete a United States Department of Agricultural and Rural Development, USDA dash RD, application to refinance existing state revolving fund debt, comply for grants and additional loans necessary for wastewater systems operation to be compliant with the Tennessee Department of Environmental and Conservation's consent award.
And Mayor and Commissioners, that caption is exactly the same caption that you voted on in the October meeting. However, on the actual resolution under section one, we add the sentence, this includes, but is not limited to, the biomag system, the wastewater treatment plant update, trunk line repair, and rainy street sewer repair. So, you can see where we did add the trunk line and the rainy street sewer.
One that lasts, let me one more.
Yes, the resolution's worded exactly the same way as what was passed in October, but so that it specifically adds the new trunk line and rainy street. It is actually worded that this includes, but is not limited to, the biomag system, wastewater treatment plant upgrades, trunk line repair, and rainy street sewer repair.
So, there's three items.
Well, it's actually four, biomag, upgrades, trunk, and rainy street. The initial resolution was for the biomag and upgrade. So, we're seeking it all grant opportunity.
One of those in my mind, okay. Does everyone understand what's going on, any questions about that? Chair, I'm taking a motion, please. Motion to accept, second. You'd be seconded, all in favor, signify the same eye. All the resolution 2017 dash seventeen has been approved. Brings item eleven, general comments and citizens, limited time and number of commitments. Is in the back, back of that one. Any questions, have anything you'd like to say?
They just call.
And what? Chair, what?
I do, I always do. I always do. Just while, in a public meeting.
We're not going to accept yours.
To make sure everybody knows that we, with the help of the Community Development Corporation, actually, they're doing all the work, we're having an art event, June seventeenth, it's an all-day event, we're having artists all around town, they, Donnie has gotten quite a few people that want to participate. That's all day, and then we have music on the square that evening, and have movies on the square that evening, too. So, mark your calendars for June seventeenth. And also, the next meeting is June twentieth, and at five o'clock, an hour before the meeting, when we're inviting the public, is when we will name and unveil this room as the Tom Harden Room, and we're going to start publicizing that on social media and through the legal community to get a good crowd here, and we'll have some take-a-tons or something like that afterwards. And you've all had your, these are, these are the covers for the tablets. You have covers for the tablets, and you have tablets, you just can't use them yet, and because we don't have an IT department, so we, we get things done as we can with employees that have other full-time jobs, we're working on it.
I thought the chief was that, too.
No, it's one of our dispatchers. So, you have those in front of you, and did anybody notice anything new in the courtroom?
Your chairs.
New chairs, they came today. And so, the mustard yellow chairs are gone.
They do really go with the. If we have an update for the.
Yes, it's new carpet.
If we have an update for the website, do we go through you, and you will give it to IT department?
Yes, the IT department that doesn't exist.
I'm not calling you on, don't worry. That's all I had. That's all I had, appreciate it.
Okay, Chair, I'm taking a motion to adjourn. So, move, move, second. All in favor, leading this issue to adjourn.
Your clock is broken back there, because it says ditch.
It hasn't been corrected.
It is correct. It is correct. You can't keep correct. Leave me on. Thank you, Arson. All right, so, yeah, okay. Apparently, we tried, but we didn't. I don't know what we are because.
Keith.
There. Yes, sir. Very pretty. I must say, I had a teacher that was.
Good to see you, Aunt Sam. Tim Barry.
Yeah.
How are y'all doing? Yellow chairs, surplus?
Yes. Maybe they need to make the. Ooh, we should add that, but if I had it, that would. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we really do. I called it from the back. That's what I'm. I want y'all to hear that.
There you go.
How are you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Doing good.
See you, Donnie. Get there, see Mr. Washington. There you go.
He was a preacher, and he was a preacher, San Antonio. Yeah, I can't keep the.